Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on our website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post the meeting on the town's website or an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of the proceedings as soon as possible.
Having that said, it's time we to call the meeting to order. I'm going to declare a quorum present. Introducing the, since we do have an audience, our participants, I'm Alice Liptow, the chair. Other board members present tonight are Francois Steiger and Bill Holman. And our administrator is Christine Sutcliffe. So I must also state that planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. And this brings us to public comments. So I don't know who's waiting to speak, but anyone wishing to speak on a matter that's that's not up, that's actually on our agenda, but a new matter, is it, is, can address the board through Christina. If you are, if you're here to comment on something that's on our agenda, we'll give you a chance to comment when that agenda item comes up. Public comments may be limited depending on members of the public who wish to speak. There's also a separate public comment period at the end if we don't reach everybody. If you direct a question to us, we may not respond immediately to your questions and concerns, but we take them seriously and we'll try to get back to you. Okay. And as a reminder, any resident can contact the planning board office or the chair for a place on future agendas if they have any issue they wish to speak at length about. So having said that, do we have anyone from the public or public comments that would like to speak?
I've promoted everyone so that they are able to speak if they unmute their volume. If you're here for a later agenda item though, then we will get to you according to our agenda.
I see Mark Curtis' name come up.
Let's see.
You are later on the agenda, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I know I'm connected then.
Can, you want to wait until your item comes up?
Sure.
Because we have to reorganize our board tonight. It's the first meeting of the new year.
I see.
So if you, is there anybody else though on the public?
I'm not sure what Mr. Bertold is here for. Everyone else I recognize from the agenda.
You want to check with him? Well, wait a minute.
Mr. Bertold, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, we're, I'm here for the, to discuss the, just the, some of the planning of the 56 Gardner Road property for the...
Okay, we have that as an action item on the agenda.
Right.
Make sure no one needed to speak during public comments. Mr. Schmidt, your, your hand was raised.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, yeah. He's on, he's on the agenda as well, right? So.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Okay, I'll demote everyone else.
And only because we should dispense with our reorganization before we start getting into these matters. So first...
Do we need a motion to start that?
To start our board reorganization? I don't think so. We need nominations in a minute, but I want to announce first that we received a letter of resignation from Craig Boyce now, who was on the board, and he submitted a resignation letter that's in the package. He, that he, he's served four years and he enjoyed his service, but he's moving on to other things, I believe firefighting. But anyway, I want to take this time to thank him for his hard work on our board and wish him the best in his future endeavors. And I also want to tell the public and anybody out there that we have a position that's open on our board. So Christine, our administrator, sent a letter to the select board requesting a posting of the opening so that applicants can be reviewed. And it's open for 30 days, is that right, Christina?
That's how long it was posted last year. The chair may decide, or the entire board may decide to post it for longer if they wish, but the posting for member and for associate member were both posted for 30 days last year.
Okay. Seems like a long time to be without someone, but on the other hand, you'd like to get people a chance. So 30 days unless anybody has an objection. And the other, she has to post for the, our alternate position, which, because it expires every year. I don't know whether, you succeeded in reaching, Josh?
No, I did not. Also, I realized I put it on our calendar, which will be discussed later, that we should probably start posting for the associate member in late May next time because we do know that that is coming due. So that way we not have as much to relax without an associate member.
Did you put that in your calendar?
I did.
Yeah.
We can, as I said, we can go over that later. I realized that that was a, something I missed this year, a problem on my part.
So again, members of the public, you don't have to be, you know, an engineer or a lawyer or anybody but a citizen willing to work. And we, we are really looking for some new voices and some new thoughts and would welcome you to serve. So if you're interested, go to the, the notice and follow the instructions and we'll consider your application. So, next business, now I'll go back to Bill. We need, the next business is to vote on a chair who I guess would take over if I don't continue with this meeting, right? So there must be a nomination, it's got to be accepted or rejected by me and then the board, or by whoever gets accepted, whoever gets nominated, and then the board has to vote on it.
I make the nomination that Alice stays as chair.
Is there a second? I would accept that nomination, but I also would not be offended if anyone else wants to chair. I'd be a willing foot soldier in this business, so.
Francois.
If I may?
Yeah.
If I, if I may, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I would like to second that nominate, that nomination made by Bill Holmans. And more importantly, I want to indicate that I think you would make a fantastic chair, given the dedication that you have put this past year on this, this, to this board.
Thanks for the kind.
And I agree with that too. You've done a lot of work and thank you, Alice.
Well, thanks, thanks. I appreciate it. And if no, no one has anything further to say, shall we take a vote?
Do you accept the nomination, Alice?
I did. I accept the nomination.
Okay.
And we, I think I need to vote because we only have...
You do. We only have three for a quorum, so you must vote on whether or not you wish to be chair.
All right. All in favor of my continuing on as chair? You have to say your name. So Alice Liptow, yes?
Bill Holman, yes.
Francois Steiger, yes.
Okay.
All in favor, recorded.
Thank you. Next, we have to nominate a clerk. And I don't know whether Bill is willing to continue to serve as clerk, or if anybody else really wants to serve as clerk, but I will nominate Bill to continue on as clerk.
I will accept the nomination unless Francois would like to do it, but I don't mind doing it. It was a very strenuous position this past year. I don't believe I did anything, but I will take the nomination.
You know, I should tell you, there is one meeting that I know I won't be at. It's my daughter's rehearsal dinner for her wedding, September 3rd, so.
I'd be more than happy to attend the meeting.
We'll be chairing that meeting if we can get a quorum. Okay.
Barring that, barring that extra work, Bill, I hope you accept my seconding that motion.
Well, thank you, Francois.
Discussions, comments? All right.
Going for the nomination, Bill?
Yes.
Yes, he said he would. So, ready to vote? Liptow, I?
Francois Steiger, yes.
Bill Holman, yes.
Okay, we got it recorded here in a clerk. Okay, so then the other, the other thing that we, I don't want to lose sight of because these are important. There are three boards in which the planning board has official membership. Well, one is an ex-faxio, ex-officio, but community preservation committee, we need somebody, capital improvement planning committee, and the economic development committee. That's the ex-officio member. So I have in the past year been the representative to the CPC. If, that's a really important position because, you know, we're, when I went on it, I thought, well, this is our, you know, our, our new initiative in affordable housing, but it's much more than that because that board, you vote on all the money to spend. So like what the big issue this year was replacing the playground, there's a number of fairly important things that get done on that committee. So I'm willing to do it, but I would also, unless I have to as the chair, do I have to, is the chair serve on that? Christina?
No, Alice, you don't. It's just a member of the planning board. That's what it says in our, our bylaw.
Okay. Does anybody else want to do that this year? They meet about eight times a year.
Okay. I myself, I participated in the capital improvement planning committee. It was a very good set of meetings that we had. As a matter of fact, I enjoyed it very much. I worked with the group that was there. I was asked to continue working with them and I said I could not until we had our meeting today. I would love to continue working with that particular group, assuming again that there's no desire of anybody else to participate in that particular committee.
I make a motion that we reappoint Alice and Francois to both their committees, if that's feasible to do at this point.
Okay, no problem.
I will, I will second that motion and indicate that I'm also, would be accepting that nomination for the capital improvement planning committee membership.
And I'm happy to stay on the CPC, so we could vote those two and then we can discuss the third, or maybe we can vote the full slate here. The economic development committee.
At the moment, John is on that board. I'd like to point out, Madam Chair, that we don't have to vote on these three tonight. The ones that have to be done are the vote on the chair and the clerk because those are legal requirements. These others can wait a meeting if we need to.
Let's wait on the economic development then, but let's vote the other two because there may be...
I did email John that it was coming up and if he wanted to be involved in it, he should let me know, but he had a lot on his plate. I didn't hear back from him this week.
Okay, well, let's just vote on the two. The community, that I would serve on the community preservation committee and that Francois would continue on the capital improvement planning committee. So, any further discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor? Liptow, I?
Holmans, yes.
Francois Steiger, yes.
Okay, great. We'll do the other one after we have at least a chance to see if John wants to continue on.
If both of you please remember, you do need to visit by appointment the town clerk and get sworn into your positions again.
Okay, right. Okay.
And we have to send a letter to the board of selectmen, letting them know that we nominate, we appointed people to those positions.
Okay, can you take care of that?
I will.
Okay, good.
Sorry, select board.
Select board, right. Okay, actually, I had mentioned this ahead of time, taking things out of order. Shouldn't scribble on my copy of the agenda, you know? Anyway, we, you did submit to the town secretary and the town clerk request post the associate member position, but we do not know at this point what, whether Josh would like to run for it again, or if anybody else is interested at this point? Has it been posted?
They've gotten in touch with me with regards to those.
Okay, so they just...
I'm not even sure that the posting is up yet. I have not gotten confirmation that it's on the website and I have not seen it on the website.
Okay.
So it may be something that they're going to wait until the one, the select board has to meet in order to post the one for our full-time members since it is their appointment, and maybe they'll do them both at once.
Okay, so again to the public, if you don't want to jump in as a, a full-time member, you can be an alternate, which is a very important position because we need that position in order to vote on special permits, of which there, we anticipate several this year. So give it a try if you think you're interested. Submit your, submit your application for it. And if you can't find the notice, contact Christina and she'll help you find it. All right, so now we move on to action items. And the first thing, I know we have people here who want to talk to us too, is the Curtis site plan review submission, which is 36 Dardner Road. Do we, do we also have Bill Murray on with us?
Yeah.
We do?
I will bring him in as well.
Okay. We also have our consultant, who we may hear from, who's William Murray from places. All right, well, why don't we first hear what Mr. Curtis has to say? Yes?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're just, well, basically we, it's more or less a meeting for a submittal where we've given copies of the prints, we've given some information on stormwater management, and I believe that they sent in the list there for the, of butters. Jay Dubois is attending the meeting. He's the engineer. Jay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm in here. I'm not sure if can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to kind of take over from there, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, like, like you said, it's just basically a submittal. You know, for tonight, we're just asking the board to accept the plans as submitted and I assume the board sends these out for review. Like you said, we did submit a full set of site plans with details, erosion control plan, stormwater management calculations and analysis, drainage plans, and the application with a, like a memo to the board that just kind of briefly just, you know, summarizes impacts to fire and police, which, you know, I don't really anticipate there to be any, and traffic as well. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure how the board typically does this, but if there's any questions at this point, can try and go through that.
I have a few questions for you.
Okay.
We, you know, we, these were put on our, our Chromebooks, the copies of the plans, which honestly, we can't, you can't see the numbers on, you know, so I just got an idea of what you had submitted.
Yep.
So I did, I did see, so you basically have the locus gradients, building location and driveways, erosion control. I don't know whether, I'm not an engineer at all. I was just trying to tag these as to what was actually submitted. The application for the site plan review, and the butters list, and then the stormwater analysis. I was looking at what you submitted versus what we're required to obtain, and I had a couple of questions for you and then we can decide what you want to do about it. If you look at Article 4, you, you are, as Roland Dean, our building inspector, said, storage units, which I guess I should also let the public know who's listening, this is a development, proposed development for storage units. Article 4 isn't allowed use as of right, so you don't need a special permit, but it does say, it does give you all the criteria for what you need to submit. And one of those things is that it says a use, the above uses, which this counts as because this would be a where, a storage facility, the above uses would be subject to a site plan approval under Article 9 and subject to an environmental and community impact analysis, which is Article 8. So then I went to, to those provisions and there is no, so I guess the question I have for you is like, you would need to do an environmental and community impact analysis unless, unless you requested a waiver, and I'm not sure the board would waive it because it's a pretty significant development proposal, and basically the benchmark is anything over 5,000 square feet, which this would certainly be. So if you look at that section, that needs to be submitted, and then I also note in the site plan approval, the last two things on that list are profiles of all building structures, signs, and landscape and maintenance plan, which I don't think were included in your submission. So I guess my question to you is, if you want to submit these tonight, I, I see it as kind of an incomplete submission because we need those factors, but I'm, we also have Bill here tonight who can help me with this. Do we start the clock? Do we don't start the clock? And, and when can we expect to see those other documents?
So as far as the landscaping plan, there, there, there was a landscaping plan in there. I believe it was on the landscaping and lighting plan, if I remember correctly.
Could be. I was really having trouble seeing the, any of it.
Yeah, yeah. The building elevations and profiles, I, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, Mark could maybe speak to that, but I mean, I don't know that those are, those are 100% complete at this point until, you know, the board kind of gives a little bit of a okay on the project before he would have those done, but I could, you know, Mark, do you have any, anything on the building?
Yeah, the buildings are, you know, approximately about 12, 12 feet high. It's a, it's basically cold storage. You know, just, you know, typical self-storage units. And that's really pretty much, pretty much it. You know, they're on a concrete slab. What, usually the way that this plays out is, once we get it approved, then I can see the company that's going to actually put the buildings up and then I can, you know, bring a rendering in, for instance, of what they're, you know, to give a rough idea what they look like. But they, most of these self-storage units are pretty much very similar. They all look pretty much alike. If you want, I could, I could drop off, you know, a pamphlet, a piece of literature that shows it, or a rendering that, that shows what, what the outside of the building looks like, the basically cubicles.
Let me, I don't want to interrupt you, but if Bill is there?
Madam Chair, we have a response from Bill in the chat. It says, it is his impression that the application is not fully complete, but that that is readily rectified during the review process.
Oh, can be reviewed, okay. And can you ask him also, the environmental impact statement, should that be considered at the same time? I think it makes sense because you're going to notify a butters and it has so many questions that the butters are going to ask, I think.
May have one public hearing or possibly even two with regards to this, depending on what's required, ma'am. So I mean, in Bill's quote with regards to this matter, he did state that there might be two meetings. We'll see.
Can you ask him about site plan if he's there? Is he?
Bill, are you willing to speak?
Bill, can you, can you address the, but I don't mean site plan, I mean the environmental and community impact analysis? How is that being handled?
That is usually provided as a, a strong draft as part of the application and then we critique it. They did miss an awful lot of the items there and it would be entirely within the board's purview to say that they haven't addressed it and they need to, but as, as I said with my typed, they, they need to fill it in. And I would suspect that that would be a second review item. It's not unusual for an application to have a, an incomplete environmental and we insist that they finalize it and enhance upon it.
Were, were you thinking, Bill, in your, in your quote of what you're reviewing, would that be included in that?
Yeah, that's the, so my first review would be zoning review, compliance review, and whatever they're missing. And then we would point that out to the applicant and say, we really want you to emphasize, one of the things that I looked at is I saw they have wall packs for lighting, which shine, which will shine on adjacent properties, and they'd need to revisit that. So I think that we're going to have an initial review. We're going to give them the bullet points. You're going to say yes or no, and then they're going to come back for at least a second review.
Okay, so if we started the clock ticking tonight with the 65 days to act, I mean, we could agree about to extend it, but would that be appropriate to accept their incomplete submission, but with the understanding that the items would be supplied in the course of review? Begin to set up a timetable here?
I think what you'd want to do is you would ask the applicant if they would be willing to continue the timeline tonight, even though you're not actually, I don't think you're a public hearing tonight. You're just, you're just accepting.
Okay.
So you're just accepting, starting the clock.
Right, but it's actually the submittal that starts the clock.
Right. And at the next hearing, you would ask them, we would give the review and you would ask them to grant an extension if it's warranted. I mean, it's, it's a fairly complete submission. It's missing a lot of the details. And at that point, you would ask them, I would suggest, for an extension, and if they didn't, then you would then have the choice to make a vote on the information as submitted or not.
Okay. And you were planning to review the environmental and community impact analysis as well, right? In your quote?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that a couple of questions is, one of which is, Mr. Curtis and Mr. Dubois, are you aware of the, you're aware that we have to have our expert review these plans because none of us are experts by any means?
Yes.
Bill Murray's quote, and...
We will send that on to them.
You have?
Oh, I will be sending that on to them once the board approves it.
Okay, so the next, but, okay, so the, the process would be, the board itself here has a copy of the quote in our package, which doesn't include administrative fees and publishing expenses and postage and the rest of it. Just Bill's time. So if we are, can we finalize that quote? I know it's...
I can send it out to them after the, after the meeting, Madam Chair.
Okay. So going back again to Mr. Curtis and Mr. Dubois, you want to, how long do you think it would take to, you know, I wasn't criticizing the submission. There's just pieces missing. I can see that it's quite detailed. And the other thing, we as board members need to do is to be able to go and look at the plans because really you cannot see them on a Chromebook. But when would...
Madam Chair, I have a physical copy of those plans if you wish to review them.
Yeah, so we'll have to come in and when we can get in, it's, it's a problem with these remote sessions, but how long do you think it would take you to sit down with Bill or to, so I guess I want to ask Bill, you sit down first and say what additional materials you need? Do you talk to them about that?
I put it in a letter to you. And then they get the letter.
Okay.
And that would be your first public hearing. You would review my review.
Okay.
And it would identify what is substantially addressed, what isn't substantially addressed, and, you know, and then the board would identify what you identify as being a higher priority, like lighting, like traffic impacts, like whatever it is. And then you would ask them to address it, and if it was appropriate for you or them to ask for a waiver to certain parts, that's where you would make that decision.
Okay, so you can, you're willing to start working with what exists, assuming that you get your consultant to, to go forward because we can't...
It's a substantially complete submission.
Okay. All right. So then I'll say to Mr. Curtis and Mr. Dubois, we'll accept your application and we'll send you, Mr. Murray's fee for reviewing the plans for us, and we'll let you meet with him once that's paid and get back to us in the next couple of weeks with the next step. Is that reasonable?
Sure.
Do we need to vote to accept the plan? Christina?
No, it's been accepted if the, as long as it's deemed complete.
Okay. Back to Mr. Curtis, what were you going to ask?
Oh, I was going to ask Jay if, if he had any, any questions. As far as putting together, putting together, you're looking for like the traffic input and also the lighting, correct?
Well, you got to go through the environmental impact, you got to look at Article 8.
Okay.
Because it talks about, and it also talks about some of the stuff which, which isn't going to be, you know, I know that there is no forest you're cutting. going to be, you know, I know that there is no forest you're cutting down or endangered species likely, but there's a lot of questions you have to answer on it.
Exactly.
So, that's in the zoning on the Article 8 for that?
Yes, Article 8, and I don't think there's a form for it, but if you just go through it.
Okay.
You can create a letter that addresses it all.
Okay, I'll take a look. I mean, you know, like, like this site has no sewer, no water, I mean, it's, it should be fairly straightforward, I think, but I'll, I'll take a look.
So, there's no, there's not going to be a employee on the site? You don't need a person, like a restroom for your?
Correct.
Superintendent or anything? So, there is no, that was one of my questions. Okay, also, have you been to, I know it has some wetlands, because it drains into wetlands, and it was on your regional subdivision proposal too, I think. So, have you been to the Conservation Commission?
No, so we actually kept all disturbance outside the 100-foot buffer zones of the wetlands.
Okay, all right, so you're not discharging into it at all?
Correct.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Bill Murray has typed in the chat that we can ask them to provide the board members with individual hard copies at full scale. They did provide me with copies already. I'm not sure if we have enough for all board members, but if I don't, I can reach out to them and get another, so that way you don't have to come by the office to review it. I can give each of you your own copy.
I'd appreciate that, especially given the circumstances at this point in time, and the inconvenience of you having to meet individually.
Is that something you can do for us, Mr. Curtis?
Sure, definitely.
We can't, we can't meet, you know, together unless it's in public, and we have to go down to the town hall otherwise, so.
No, I can, just let me know what you need, and, and I'll provide it.
Christine, I'll send you a note.
Okay.
Okay, along with everything else, and we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Okay, did you have any other, do you have any other questions, Jay, or is that pretty much it?
No, I guess we'll just wait to see some initial feedback from Bill and, and, you know, start addressing them and go from there.
Great.
Jason, if you want to reach out to me directly, I have no issue with that, through, that's through the chair, if the chair is okay with that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that works.
I will send you his email when I send you the quote.
Okay.
But you do have to, to, to pay for his, to pay the planning board for his fee?
Okay.
Before he can really begin to work, because we don't have any funds.
Exactly, no, totally understood, and once I receive that, the same day that I receive it, I'll run it back up.
Great, yeah, you might talk with Christina to see what the situation is in terms of dropping off checks. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time, Board.
Okay, thanks, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, now.
Good night. So, Bill, don't go away, because our next issue is, is Mr. Talby there?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so our next issue on our agenda is the Catasto gravel pit reclamation update, and for members of the audience, if there is any, this relates to a special permit we granted almost a year ago now, to restore an old gravel pit that belonged to the Catasto family, and the, through restoring the soils. And the lead contractor on that was Casella Organics, and Jim Talby represents them, so that's here tonight, okay? He's here tonight, right?
Yes.
Yes, good evening.
Hi, Jim, wherever you are.
I'm out here. Is my supervisor on this call too, because I only can see you four?
I have, is it Mr. Smith?
Clark James.
Not have him on this call.
I did see that he sent, was sent an invite, I'm surprised, I'm very, anyway, he was supposed to be on with me, but that's fine, I can handle it. So, the update is, we're still interested in the Catasto gravel pit. We've been involved in some very large agricultural projects in Western Mass, but the coronavirus has had a serious impact on the product that we use to recycle. The paper mill recycles white office paper. All the offices are closed, so the production of this material is down considerably, so our projects are sort of bogged down. The, usually, I have to stay out in front of these projects, like this one, you know, get the project, permit, sort of inventory it for a period of time, just because we need, it takes so much time to permit these, we have to be out in front a substantial amount of time. Well, that's all kind of come to a creeping halt. The DEP does not work well from home, so processing the renewals has been painstaking. I speak to them from home. My gentleman from the Worcester County office does not have daily access to a VPN, so he can't even access his records. He's, he works limited hours, so trying to get our renewals in place is just one part of our, the slowdown in what I do. The other issue that my supervisors have been asking me a lot of questions about is the, the stormwater portion of this. When we first started this, that wasn't something that we planned for. Just the, I've been trying to explain what the cost would be, they feel as if it's a little open-ended. You know, generally, these are agricultural, this one is not. I didn't know if there would be any relief in, in some of that stormwater work, because we feel as if the stormwater was already installed, water does not leave the site, and our material makes it completely erosion-proof, that's the reason for doing it. And, you know, right now, SWCA that does our permitting gave me a cost of over $15,000 for their part of it, and I'm not sure what the end result would be for Mr. Murray's contribution. That's sort of like breaks our budget for this small project. So, those are the side issues.
So, Jim, you're, on the first issue, the special permit is good for two years?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, one.
Is that, oh, oh, because it was a general bylaw permit, not a special?
Well, you know, the DEP permit that we submit, that you review and approve?
Yeah.
Has to be renewed every year, and it's a time, DEP hates doing them, it is time-consuming for them. We were hoping that with the COVID, maybe, most of the surrounding states have much longer timelines for these projects, because many times, I submit an application, get approved, we never do a thing until it's time to actually submit a renewal, just because I have to be out in front of these projects. But anyway, that's, that's the situation we're dealing with, with the DEP, the paper mill. We, we don't see the paper supply coming back anytime soon. So, we're not sure where this is going. Like, we're down to two and three loads a day. We used to manage, you know, we would manage a number of sites at the same time, seven, eight, nine, and 10 loads of this paper a day, but we're down to just a handful right now. So, the projects we have ongoing have just slowed down considerably. So, this site here, with the best-case scenario with the renewal that would need to be submitted, and the flow of paper, it's looking like a September, October thing, best-case scenario. I'm hoping that my DEP engineer has access to a VPN from home soon, but he does not have that at this current time.
All right, well, I don't know that there's much we can do for you. I mean, I understood that the, this is my understanding, which is very layman, is that the stormwater management portion of this is like a state-mandated thing? I don't know, maybe?
I had a conversation with my DEP engineer who permits my sites, and he thought it was a little bit excessive for these type of projects. That was his comment. He, he thought it was unnecessary.
Excuse me, Alice, Bill Murray has typed in chat that the stormwater pollution prevention plan is required by federal law, and the planning board does not have the ability to waive it.
Can you, can you patch him in for a second?
He is actually patched, and if you wish to ask him something.
Bill, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, you know, I remember this being a debate when we granted the permit, and I also remember them wanting to do it during the dry season, right? So, this is kind of a curveball, but is there, this be something you'd expect, a big project where $15,000 might be what a developer would, you know, this kind of project would cost someone to do? It's only six acres.
Well, they're required to submit this SWPPP under federal law. Remember, no offense to Jim, but he does a lot of agricultural, and they're exempt. This is not an agricultural project, so he's not exempt, and you can't waive that requirement, it's a federal law.
Yeah, I knew we couldn't waive it.
And I, I really shouldn't speak to the cost. I mean, the, the cost of developing a SWIP, he's using a very well-qualified firm out in Amherst, they're actually doing the BURGO too, and they're doing a fantastic job. But, I shouldn't speak to the cost of their consultants' review.
Fair enough, fair enough. I, I understand now why the agricall, I was going to, I was thinking that, would a farmer be willing to pay the five, you know, $15,000 fee for, to enhance his field, but he's exempt, so I get it, why it's different. All right, Jim, I don't know what to tell you, but, you know, we wish you the best.
Alice Francois would like to speak.
Yes, Francois.
I have some very basic fundamental questions. I understand from Bill's comments that the SWPPP is certainly something that has to be done, and which, there's no question about this here. We do not want to violate the federal law when it comes to that. And the question I guess I have is for Mr. Talby, are there other parameters in your cost analysis that were ones that you were going to take a look at? And I guess my question is, is there's things that are not, they're not variable, they're fixed, such as the SWPPP, but are there other elements in your analysis where you are basically at this point in time saying that this may cause me a problem? And because I would, I would believe that that might be something that we can discuss here.
No, the, the other variables in these reclamation projects, it's relatively straightforward. We feel as if there's plenty of soil there that was mounded on the edges to mix. We don't foresee any other issues, just, this is the one that I've been getting a lot of questions on from my supervisors, was the stormwater. We've reclaimed gravel pits before. Maybe the other towns violated the federal law. I was never presented with that before. That very well could be the case.
Okay.
Jim, I'd be happy to talk to you outside of the, the public meeting about this, but I'm not going to tell you whether your consultant is giving you a good price or not in a public realm.
Okay.
This is not the forum, that's not my intention. My intention of the question is, my intention of the question, Mr. Valby, is really to understand, where are your cost parameters? Are, is that we as a board can help you with, or maybe look at, or whatever? I mean, we clearly understand that there are federal requirements. We definitely, as a town, want to make sure that we're hearing to those. Is there anything else that you're asking the board to look into beyond what we have just discussed? And it sounds like there is none, that, that's what I want to ask.
I'm going to have another discussion, I'll have a discussion with Bill offline, but I will also have another discussion with my DEP engineer. Maybe, because he's the one that thought it was just, you know, he, for the, he works with our agricultural sites, so maybe, but he thought it was over the top for what we're going to do. Maybe he sees a different pathway that I'm unaware of, but I will have that conversation.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, we really want to see it go forward. We've got a lot of gravel pits, but I totally get your predicament with this.
Well, this, the COVID was something that was totally unexpected by everybody, but it especially impacts my job from the office paper scenario.
Yeah.
And the problem is, that paper mill is competing with about 12 other paper mills in the Northeast now for a very limited amount of material. But anyway, we, we'll work through that. Let me have a conversation with the DEP, and then I'll touch base with Bill.
Great, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
And updating us, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Jim. Okay, I don't think we have to take any action on that, so we'll move to the next item, which is, is, is Mr. Schmidt here? He is, right? Christina?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one other person here. I'm not sure who she's related to. There's Ms. Beth Tybals, and I was just curious, do we want to find out what she's here for, or?
Ask her.
Ms. Tybals, I've unmuted your selection. Would you like to address the board with why you're here? Ms. Tybals?
No, well, if she comes back, you can ask her again.
She can also raise her hand if she wishes to, and I'll notify the board that she's speaking. Okay, in the meantime, I'm going to bring Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Bertold. They're both here with regards to the paperwork we received.
Okay, and for the benefit of the public, this, this, the item on our agenda pertains to a proposed recreation, recreational marijuana retail cultivation and manufacturing facility at 56 Gardner Road, and a recreational marijuana cultivating project at 69 Gardner Road. So, Mr. Schmidt?
Hi, hi, everybody.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, so I wanted to try to move along the process here. We have signed host community agreements, the HCAs for 69 Gardner Road for the outdoor cultivation, and at 56 Gardner Road, host community agreements were signed for cultivation, manufacturing, and retail. So, we're moving through the process here, and we're getting ready to try to submit the paperwork that the town requires for the special permit process. And part of Article 22, one of the, getting it through right now, one of the light items says that after we enter into a host community agreement with the town of Hoverston, that we should try to reach out to the planning board. And basically, we just certify that we're in compliance with the local zoning, including the buffer zone. So, what I had done is emailed our beginning site plans that showed that we were within the buffer zone, or outside of the buffer zone that we need to be. And basically, we thought we'd come on, talk about it. I know, I wanted to introduce you guys again to Bowie, I know he was already in there once, and he can talk about 56 Gardner Road, but I thought I'd talk to you as well about 69 Gardner Road, and then hopefully, we could get the planning board to vote that we are in the right commercial zone, and we can try to move forward with presenting a special permit in hopefully the next two or three months.
Well, we're, we're happy to listen.
All right. All right, so you guys just want me to start going kind of over the two plans that we had sent, or how, how do you want me to proceed?
Um, sure, you know what, I think that would be fine. You got to recall, you got to remember that we're working on, this isn't the special permit, you'd obviously have to file a special permit.
Yeah.
We also are working on Chromebooks, and these things are pretty minuscule in detail.
Yeah.
But go ahead and walk us through them. You want to start with 56?
Uh, sure, if you want to unmute Bowie, that's his side of the street. I can kind of give you a brief overview. As I originally, if anyone remembers, started at 56. And basically, you know, Bowie, if you guys want to unmute him in a minute, he can go over his, his plans that he has.
Okay, great, hi, everybody. Hi, yeah, I'm just curious, can you guys see me?
No.
No, okay, wasn't sure. So, yeah, at, at 56 Gardner Road, we have the host community agreements from the town for the retail shop, currently the, the old stove shop there, and then for a large up- And then, um, for a large up to fifty thousand square foot greenhouse. I'm going all the way to tier six, and then also the product manufacturing agreement as well, which is really part of the, um, kind of the cultivation process. And, you know, they're both, uh, manufacturing things. But we were, um, wanted to talk about, since we're, uh, moving forward with a special permit to get the, um, the retail store opened, you know, renovated and start going through that process, um, first. Since it's a smaller building, it's only, uh, two, eighteen hundred square feet roughly, it's sixty by thirty. And, um, it's, uh, really the, um, sort of the first thing that we can do. Um, you can get in there and that's more or less our plan is to try and move forward with that special permit first.
This is an entirely new building, correct? The old stove shop is not part of it?
No, that, no, we, we're going to renovate the old stove shop.
Okay, so when you show on your plan, general location of manufacturing, where is it on your plan? Is that the gray box?
Yep, so then, the, you see the general location of the manufacturing building, that is the existing, um, commercial building that's there that was a, I believe it was a golf cart, um, a golf, the guy was making custom golf carts there for a while.
Okay.
So that, that building is there, and then if you look at, um, on the plan, there's the retail store. That is the stove shop, so those are both staying there.
Okay, they both exist right now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and, and, you know, if you've ever been in the, the stove shop, I mean, it's a nice shop. It was, you know, it's a relatively new structure. Um, there's no real reason to tear it down, it's, uh, goods, it's good square footage, it has, um, you know, plenty of parking, once we get the parking plan, um, approved and that's pretty much, that's what we would like to do is renovate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, um.
So just retail, you know, to simplify, retail first and then moving on to cultivation, which is obviously a larger, uh, building, larger project. Um, you know, the plan has always been to keep that stove shop, renovate it and, um, use it since it's, you know, perfectly functional.
Okay.
And, can I jump in real quick? It's Damon again.
Damon, yeah.
So, do you guys see where on the plan where there's the dash line? That's, that dash line, if you can see where the, the green or the red cultivation, uh, marks bounce up against? That's the fifty-foot boundary. So in terms of the buffer zone, the bylaw, you know, requires us to stay fifty feet away from the, uh, the abutting parcels. So I just wanted to point that out, that Bowie's entire structure is, is within, you know, the buffer zone. And then the entire structure is within the commercial zone.
Okay, is this one of those lots that has a part of it that's not commercial?
No, that's me across the street.
Okay.
That's sixty-nine.
Okay, okay. All right, well, and then this cult, you have all these cultivation bays, are they? But we do have our limited bylaw is, our bylaw, all marijuana establishments are allowed by special permit. All right, so you're looking to, how, how much, um, growing, how much is, growing would this be?
So with, um, with that particular drawing that we're looking at there, so that's the, that's more or less the complete project. So that is, you know, that is close to thirty-eight thousand square feet of greenhouse. Um, those bays are roughly twenty-four by a hundred and forty-four feet long. Um, so of that thirty-eight thousand square feet, it'd really only be twenty-five to thirty thousand feet of actual canopy. So the, you know, what they measure as the growing space. Um, and it would be built in phases, so we would start with bays one through four. And, um, start with that, that would start us out around fourteen thousand square feet.
So those would be the first boxes, cult, cult and cult up to four?
Yep.
Okay. And then you build back onto the lot from the street after, I'm back into the, the greenhouses, is you back from the street in later phases?
Exactly.
Okay. And so how many, uh, square feet would be, you said, I can't do math that fast. So how many, um, how much, can, how big would the canopy be for those first initial phase?
Um, so they would be, it would be roughly, I have to do the, a quick, uh, calculation here. Be about ten thousand square feet of canopy roughly, of just actual growing canopy.
Okay, right. All right, open up to the, anything else you want to say, or shall I open up to questions? Then we'll go back to, uh, the other site. Bill or Francois?
I have a, I have.
You're breaking up. Try it again.
Try, try a little slower. There, I see there's eleven CULTs, which are the cultivation spots. Are each one of those equally dimensioned except for the last one there, I'm assuming?
Yes, they're all twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and forty-four feet long.
Gotcha, and then you have two, two remaining ones which are adjoining to what is going to be your retail store. One more cultivation and one more that says headhouse. That is, what's the dimension on those?
Those are roughly, um, one-ten by, uh, thirty each. And so those are, those are slightly, those are slightly off to scale on the drawing, but those, that's also, um, so that, that one building that says headhouse, what a headhouse is, is, a headhouse is, it's basically instead of a, uh, a growing bay, it's the same, it's connected to the greenhouse, but it's usually corrugated steel or panel and, um, we'll have our, uh, boilers in there for the radiant heating of the, for the floor and, you know, the heating and the cooling of some of those front bays, some machinery. Um, basically things that don't need growing, that need just, uh, like mechanical storage space.
Gotcha, okay, that's where I was going, so I'm trying to understand what the headhouse would be doing, okay.
All right. Um.
I'm, I, Alice, I do have one additional question. At this point in time, this general location of the manufacturing operations, the retail store, they are supplied with water, is that correct?
Yes.
It's well water?
It is.
Okay, uh, and you indicated, is there a, is there a, already a septic in this, on this location?
So the septic is, um, is up in the, if you're looking to, moving towards the road, it's in the right-hand corner of the property.
Gotcha.
It's already in, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I see, it says proposed septic system on the plan.
It's so hard to see.
Yeah. You know, it's hard to read, I printed it out and it got a little bigger.
Okay.
All right, well, um, I know you're just, just here to sort of familiarize us with these plans, right?
They're also looking for a letter, ma'am.
Okay, what are you looking for a letter for?
Uh, they're looking for a letter in, in association with Article twenty-two point five point three. And I was wondering, do we want to have their plans reviewed? Before we provide that letter?
Could I, uh, can I jump in real quick?
Yes, Damon, go ahead.
So when there's, they're saying the letter, what, what, if I could take a step back. So the Cannabis Control Commission is gonna reach out to the town of Hubbardston, um, after our applications are deemed complete. And, um, you know, we've moved through the process. Um, so then they'll send a request to the town. And at that point, you know, the town can then send a letter back. So you probably have about two months, um, you know, to start really, you know, worrying about sending the letter out.
What is it they want, they want in their letter, what are they looking for?
Um, I don't know specifically, I've never seen the letter. They sent it to Royalston and Templeton, and I'm not sure what the letter said. But basically, um, the letter's asking you if we're in compliance with your local zoning. Um, and if you actually really signed a host community agreement with us. Um, so it's, it's, it's pretty standard stuff. Um, but tonight, we, we weren't really asking you, you know, we're not asking you to, you know, tomorrow to send a letter. Uh, tonight was more just to vote on, you know, if we're within the, the buffer and we're in the actual correct zone. Um, so according to your bylaws, it kind of just shows that, you know, hopefully tonight you guys would, you know, make a, a, a vote that, you know, that we conform to the, uh, the zoning and also the buffer zone requirements. And then, you know, according to your bylaws, which we want to follow, um, you know, we're in the process of, you know, putting everything together for the special permit. So we're hoping that all the stars align here in the next, you know, two, maybe three months, hopefully two months. Uh, by the time our application is complete, uh, you know, we'll be submitting special, you know, the special permit paperwork. Uh, for what Bowie was mentioning about going first with the retail, uh, special permit, um, that will, that would mean that he doesn't have to go with Article eight because it's not over five thousand square feet. Uh, but for Bowie going to fifty thousand square feet, which he does want to put a special permit in for, and for myself at sixty-nine Gardner Road across the street, um, you know, we'll have to do Articles seven, eight and nine. Um, so I, I, I think what I heard Bowie said is he was trying to proceed, you know, put a special permit in for the retail store so we could get that open, you know, months, you know, before the cultivation site. Um, so from, you know, from our standpoint, that's kind of our, our timeline is in the next month Bowie should be putting in a special permit, followed by, you know, special permits for, uh, his cultivation and manufacturing, and then across the street for my cultivation. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair, um, Bill Murray brought up in chat that compliance determinations are the purview of the building inspector, not the planning board.
Yeah, that's what I was.
They say zoning determination, there is a form that they can go through with the building department for a zoning determination to ensure that they're in compliance.
All right.
Um, we don't have, I mean, we'd have to review page twelve of our zoning bylaws with regards to whether your setbacks and building height were correct, and those aren't actually outlined on these plans.
Yeah.
I, I do think you need to speak to Mr. Roland James, he's the building, Roland Gene, I'm sorry. Um, because, because he's really the expert, he's the building inspector, right?
Yeah, 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 uh, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, on our plans, we show that we're, you know, more than fifty feet back from the abutters.
You're showing the same plan.
Excuse me.
If you could show him the same plan, that would be, just because it's supposed to come from him and not us.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Um, you know, we can, we can definitely work, um, you know, with the town so we can run this in tandem. Um, but that's kind of our timeline is, you know, within next two months, um, you know, we'll be, uh, submitting our special permit to the town. Um, and then, and then from a timeline from us, our application's in with the Cannabis Control Commission. Our, you know, they're already in with that, the CCC. So we should be having our provisional licenses, uh, from the town. I would imagine in the, um, you know, October timeframe.
Okay.
Um, and then hopefully, you know, I don't mean to spoke, speak for Bowie, um, but if that's the case, you know, his retail store, you know, has a very good chance of being open in February.
Okay.
And then, you know, i- if, you know, all things aligned by next summer, you know, his cultivation and manufacturing facility should be up as well.
So he would, he, he's willing to open his store without having built the greenhouses, you're not gonna build in the middle of winter, right?
Well, you know, we could build in the middle of the winter, but I think what Bowie is alluding to is, you know, the, the retail store is already built, it's already there.
Right.
Um, so all he has to do is, you know, somewhat of a quick rehab for a couple of months, you know, get that open. Um, you know, so he should be able to, for the greenhouse, it's, it's a big deal. Um, you know, there's gonna be stormwater, you know, you, there's a lot of, uh, environmental impact study we're gonna have to do over there. Uh, so that's gonna take a couple of months in itself. Um, so by the time, you know, he's up and running, I would imagine that the retail store would have already been open for four to six months.
Okay, so are you thinking that you would, uh, put a special permit application in for the retail store? And then a special permit for adding cultivation to it?
Correct. And I, and when, when the, the special permit for the retail store is submitted, there would be a full site plan showing the property's full, um, build out to fifty thousand square feet. So we're gonna be going to the, you know, to the limit that the town has for commercial property of fifty thousand square feet of a structure. As all of these structures will connect.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious about, um, the, the site plan review and the detail which, which you're looking for, for the special, you know, for the special permit. In the, in October, are we looking at sort of the renovation of a retail store? Or we're looking at, you're looking for approval of the whole thing because it's a much more complicated submission?
Yeah, that was one of the questions that we had, if, you know, we could submit a special permit just for the retail store. And at the same time that we would submit that special permit, there would be a full set of plans for the greenhouse as well. In terms of, you know, a site plan. Now, the stormwater report and, you know, all of that would be separate, but we're hoping to move forward with the retail store first.
Okay, I just, just thinking of logistics, maybe Bill could help me too. But, um, I guess my only concern is, if you go for a special permit for the retail store, right? Um, I mean, even if you submit the other conceptual plans, we probably wouldn't grant a special permit for the whole thing unless everything was, you know, we had everything in front of us.
Yeah.
Two-step process at that point. But I don't have a problem with that, I'm just thinking, you know, you gotta go through it twice and it's two different votes, right?
All right.
So, um, that's fine with me, I'm not here to give you guidance, I'm just trying to understand what you're asking us to do.
All right, well, I think we'll, um, you know, again, I don't want to speak for Bowie, but if, you know, maybe we can go back to our timeline. I, I kind of hear what you're saying, that, you know, we'd be asking you guys to do everything twice here for the same piece of property.
Well, and not only that, but it's two different votes, so you know, you get a different board, you get a different group of abutters, a different, it's, it's more of a, you know, you just need to be aware of that.
All right, so do you, all right, so I guess if we could take a step back, then maybe it makes more sense for us to put it, the special permit together for everything. And then we'll just open up the retail store first, but within the context of the, you know, the plan. Does that make more sense, if we'll just put a special permit for the cultivation, manufacturing and retail all at once? So there's only one vote. We can.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Bill Murray.
Um, if, if they want to open up the retail well in advance of the growing and, and the other processing, then I would recommend that they do it separately. Because the, the depth and the detail that's gonna be required for this review, the, the retail will not be as intensive as the massive amount of square footage that they're gonna do for growing. And I'd recommend they break it down into two separate permits because, especially since your special permit has a life. And they're, they're not proposing to do the grow houses until after the retail is, is working and it's gonna take some time to phase it in.
Exactly.
But your comments are, are exactly right, you've got, you know, it's a special permit, they need a super majority of the board, it's two votes and the board changes every few years and, and they have to consider all of those, uh, those conditions.
But I think if, with your tight timeframe, you could do it probably for the store, because these are existing buildings with an existing footprint, right? I mean.
That, that was our thought, yep.
Yeah. I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm just, just trying to understand it. You can let us know, you don't have to commit, right?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
You want to talk a minute about sixty-nine Gardner Road?
Yep, definitely, definitely.
Okay, go ahead.
All righty, so sixty-nine Gardner Road's a little different, we're backed up in the woods. Um, so we have a host community agreement for, uh, fifty thousand square foot of canopy of, uh, outdoor recreational marijuana. Uh, so if you look at the layout that I have, um, kind of shows, you know, an enclosed, uh, area. You can see there's the dash line of the, uh, commercial line, do you guys see that at all, or?
You know, help me get oriented to this, the road is shown on the, on the, in the upper, uh, right-hand corner. right-hand corner, is that Gardner Road?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, it's not labeled, label it.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, um, it's about 1,400, it's about 12 to 1,400, uh, feet back from the road.
I see, yep, across the wetland.
Yep, yeah, so if you, you, can you see the cart path at all? Do you see how, uh, the cart path crosses the, uh, the little wetland area?
This 12-foot wide driveway.
Yep.
Cart path, okay, and it, yep.
Oh yeah, so that 12-foot wide driveway at the top, if, if that's at the top, that's one way that we could get in. Uh, I'm going to prefer to change the driveway to where the cart road is. Uh, so there was actually a, um, you know, all this engineering was done back, uh, many years ago, uh, for the, uh, Peter Layton. Uh, so they had two driveways coming in, one way on the top of the border of the property and the other was just going over the current cart road.
Oh, I see, cart road is very dim. It must be in a different color or something.
Yep, yep, so that's, that, that's the existing road and there's already a, uh, midi, I call it a midi bridge. Um, you know, that goes over the wetlands there. Uh, so that, there's already an engineer plan drawn for that, so that's where we would have our driveway.
And that's shown on some other recorded plan already?
Uh, yep, yep, the plans show that. Um, so I'm actually going for my driveway permit as we speak. Um, so, and then you see the enclosed fenced area.
The line connected by the boxes.
Yep, so that's the fence area, correct.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the area that we're going to be growing the marijuana, that we're also be growing hemp for CBD in that area. Uh, and then attached to that area is a dry cure building. And the dry cure building is not to scale. Uh, that was my addition on PowerPoint. Uh, so that's going to be a hundred by 60-foot building, so a 6,000 square foot metal building. And that basically serves for a dry cure trim building, uh, as well as that's where the plants start out. Um, and basically that's the secure building. Uh, so how the Cannabis Control Commission has it is, you know, you can grow outdoors, you can have the security for growing outdoors. But the moment that you cut it down, you need to move it into a secure facility.
Okay.
So that's kind of, you know, where we're headed here.
Okay, tell me.
Yep.
Um, I mean, this lot, this drawing is a little confusing to me. The, so the, the area within the fence, is it 7.36 acres or 12 acres or says lot two, parcel A, how many, how many acres are in that growing area?
So what you're looking at right now, it's, it's, the property is a little cut off towards the street and then, uh, to the left as well. The entire property is 19 acres.
Yeah.
What you're looking at right now and that entire footprint is probably about 17 acres.
Okay, so 17 of the nine will be under cultivation?
It, it, well, not under cultivation. If you look in terms of that fence, that fenced-in area is 100,000 square feet.
Okay.
And that dash line is the commercial line that's going through that fenced-in area. And that fenced-in area runs 50 feet into residential from the dash line is where that fence is.
Is that, I, I, I'm, is the label, oh, zoning line, okay, I see it's, it's, um, hash marks that are really long and it makes a writing.
Yep. Correct.
Okay, and so everything towards the Gardner Road end is commercial. But your dry cure building would be in a residential.
Correct. And the reason that we have that is the current bylaws allow for outdoor cultivation in residential. So without, with, yeah, with outdoor cultivation comes a dry cure building. So you can't have, you can't, like, the Cannabis Control Commission doesn't allow you just to, you know, grow marijuana outdoors.
Yeah.
Without a building.
I'm just thinking that that all of these zoning compliance, when it's, you know, the setbacks and the uses, that's also something that has to go before the building inspector and not us. Am I right, Bill? Is Bill still there? So you, you have to, but that is, that's right, is if you have, I mean, I don't know, I don't have the bylaw memorized, but if you have a split lot, you go with the majority of the lot. So it's, it's probably alright. I just can't say that. You need to take it to, uh, Mr. James.
Alright, definitely.
Okay.
No, a, a split lot allows, allows the more restrictive use to extend, I think it's 50 feet into the more restrictive zone. So you get a 50-foot allowance, but you don't get a carte blanche beyond that.
Okay, so.
And of course, I don't have the plans. I can't see the plans, so I don't.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the reason why that dry cure building is there is within the bylaws of Hubbardson, it allows for tier one or tier two of recreational cultivation in a residential area. So part of our plan is, you know, we're going to use, you know, part of that area in residential to take up 10,000 square feet of cultivation if we need it. Um, and then, you know, with, you know, having an outdoor cultivation in residential allows you to have a dry cure building in residential. So that, that's my understanding of the bylaw.
I think he's right, but the billing inspector would have to make that determination.
Definitely.
So you need to speak to him, but you can tell him you came before us and familiarized us with the plans and we told you to go see him.
Perfect, yeah, this is a work in progress, so we're, we're definitely patient. We, you know, we just want to get it done and get it done in the right way, so.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate these drawings. And we will, you know, we'll definitely work with you to.
And everything on that drawing is, you know, from an engineer except my blue arrows and green typing. That was, that was my PowerPoint just to show you guys. Uh, we have the, the original uh, engineer who did the plans for the Laytons is doing the new plans for us.
Okay.
So they're actually going to come out and help me stake out everything that I'm showing you. And then, um, you know, a- and the good news is here is I'm not going and cutting a whole bunch of trees. I don't know if anyone's ever been, this is the old, uh, you know, this used to be a tree farm. So a- almost 90% of what I'm showing you where we are is complete, uh, open, uh, grass, grassland right now. So Owen, my buddy, so it's ki- it's kind of weird. I bought the piece of land next to my buddy, so my buddy to the south of this property, Owen Rude, he, um, he actually is going over there to cut the grass, so it's, that entire property isn't, you know, isn't wooded, so we're not going in there and just clear cutting. It's, it's literally just a open field at the moment.
Well, that's good. Don't, don't get too far into it before you talk to Roland.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, right, so, um, we'll look forward to hearing from you soon.
Alright, perfect, oh yeah, we'll, we'll keep you guys updated.
Wait, before you leave us, from Bill or Francois?
I was a quick question, and I think you may have already answered it. I, it was just a curious big question regarding the two properties uh, that you were reviewing with us tonight. Have both properties already been purchased by both you, Mr. Bertold, and also by Mr. Schmidt?
Yep, so the property at 69, uh, we bought, I believe in February. I can't remember which month. And then the property over 56 Gardner, I have a purchase and sale and basically we're making payments. And the end of our payments is four months. So where are we, July? So in November, it's the end of our P and S, so we'll own it by November.
Gotcha, okay, I was just curious because I did see still for sale signs and I was, uh, as I passed by.
Yeah, no, so that for sale sign that you see in front of that house is for 63 Gardner. Um, so that's, that, are you talking, there's a red barn and then the house? Yep, so that's 63 Gardner, the, uh, the Layton family owned that as well, so they're selling that. That's actually under contract. And I didn't go out of my way multiple times to ask the real estate agent if they have made them aware of what we are doing. And they said they are well aware, so, just to let you guys know. Yeah, yeah, so that, that 63 is under, under contract and they still have 56 at the Woodstow shop. He still has that up for sale. I don't know why. But.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much for coming.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, bye.
Okay. Shall we move on?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Um,
I don't think anything else on our, uh, agenda calls for Mr. Murray to be here. Um, I was going to let him know that it's okay if he wants to head out with the board's compliments for coming as a resident tonight.
I have one question for Bill, actually. I know you thought you'd escape. Bill, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, so here's my question. I'm going to jump ahead because it's something that Francois brought to my attention and I've spent some time on. This is a solar question. And the question came up in connection with 147 Williamsville Road, which we had last week. Um, you know, we extended, well, we didn't extend it. We said their special permit's still good. And that meeting ended and we got a letter, June 30th, from, uh, Ann, I've forgotten her last name here, I've written it somewhere. Uh, Ann Chavas. Uh, and she said that the battery housing units were being delivered. And she sent photos of them being delivered and of the, and then the batteries would come in either this week or next week. Um, and what occurred to me is I, I know this was all carefully done when we amended their special permit, but ours, our, um, solar bylaw doesn't talk about allowing specifically uh, battery installations for storage. And I think that, looking at, at everything, that that's going to be the new normal. That solar fields are going to help them. So I was looking at, I mean, you could argue, it does say storage facilities, but I don't think it's what it really means, the bylaws. It was in a provision that deals with architectural. So i- i- will you, um, keep an eye out for how that should be amended to include those battery storage facilities?
Um, I think you simply call that an allowed accessory use to a solar facility.
Okay. Allowed accessory use, okay, and so does it have any additional, I mean, you think of batteries and lithium and these things are big as houses. Is there a particular, and I know we went like to the fire chief and stuff, but is there any particular risk associated with that?
There's, there's a very limited fire risk, but they're in shipping containers, steel shipping containers. Um, so we looked at that and there is very limited exposure potential.
Okay, and what about disposal, the decommissioning? Would the bond cover that too?
That's a good question.
So, if I, that was, uh, uh, Madam Chair. So I do, I do recall that discussion and more importantly, I think they made very clear that they had, uh, uh, fire extinguishing, uh, capabilities within the containers themselves. I think it's Halon, what is, that they are, that are actually using. The disposal is certainly something that needs to be, uh, potentially reviewed. Uh, as to who reviews that, I do not know.
I, I do. I do remember them vociferously saying that the val- the recycle value of the batteries is much greater than almost all of the other components of the, on the entire site. So that, that would be one of the first things that they would remove from the site for recycle value.
I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Bill, that that presently is the case. 30 years from now, we don't know. And so we just need to be very much aware of that, and that is, is like steel was, or iron was very precious commodity when China was going bang, but gangbusters with their construction. And now you cannot, you cannot pay somebody to take, take it off your hands. Uh, who knows what happens with lithium or lead or something of that nature in the future. It is still how are considered to be an element that needs to be, uh, remediated at some point in time, and therefore I think it has to be reviewed and something needs to be addressed on, on, on that aspect.
Maybe in the permit or. Anyway, we are looking at this bylaw anyway because as I mentioned to you earlier, we also wanted to improve the site study for these and Christina's had, says we've had several inquiries about other solar uh, fields, so you know.
But when, when you have a moment, Dallas, regarding to this and just a continuation of the discussion. One of the technologies that I'm actually, uh, very much hearing that some of these, uh, specifically this comes really from the utility companies is the citing of, uh, storage facilities themselves without necessarily having a solar field. And the main reason is, is that there's enormous surplus in some cases of solar energy during certain times of the day. And storage facilities are, uh, at a, at a, at a premium where the demand, uh, from, from some of the companies. And so I think that as a board, we ought to maybe look at our, our bylaws more comprehensively and see whether or not the storage facilities may become a proposition that individual companies such as the Borregos of the world and others may look at in the future at storing much, much more, uh, in, in places, not only where they're going in the solar collection of, of solar energy, but also maybe just even having facilities in, in towns like ours which are just fully dedicated for the purposes of storing energy during the day and then releasing it at night, as an example.
So primary was an accessory use, right?
Yeah. That would be a primary use on an accessory.
Right. So I'm not trying to tie you down tonight, I'm just trying to say that we we're working on this bylaw and if we need to tweak it, to address the issue of storage, we might as well do it while we're trying to fix the citing issue in it.
Correct, and I, and potentially opening it up for what the, what, where this technology is really going. I mean, renewables are here, they're here to stay, and we definitely are in the midst of a revolution when it comes to it here in Hubbardson when it comes to the solar. Um, but there's an addendum that is coming as a result of the surplus of energy that's actually being produced at times when people do not necessarily need it or use it. And I think that as a board, we may want to start evaluating that and, and looking into this here.
I think that's forward thinking.
Sounds awesome.
Bill, did you want to say something? No.
I got a bad connection. I'm hearing little bits and pieces here.
Oh, we'll update you. I'll call you tomorrow if you like. Um, alright, well, Bill, thank you. Keep those thoughts in mind and we'll be in touch.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you, Bill, very much for coming tonight. Okay.
Good. Bye now.
Bye. Sorry, everybody, I wanted to just catch you before we left. Um, alright, so under new business, there is a fifth item, well, item five is new business, and one of the things under it is A. Uh, this is, we got a Christina got an anonymous phone call complaint, complaining about the sign on the container at Tiny Toes and Little Bowes. Um, I guess the, she can tell you more about it. You want, do you want to describe the call?
Uh, yes, I received a phone call with regards to, um, the sign on the side of Tiny Toes and Little Bowes at our current bylaw. Um, and whether or not the sign violated that bylaw. I, I let the caller know that if it was, uh, something he wanted to complain about with regards to a signed bylaw, he would have to go to the, uh, CEO, because that is his purview, uh, enforcement of zoning, um, bylaws. Um, I was, then because we had a special permit open for them earlier this year, I reviewed that. Uh, he did go to the CEO and was told that he could not submit an anonymous complaint um, through the building department. They don't accept anonymous complaints. Um, I did tell him that I would look into it as a matter of the planning board. Um, but, and I would keep the call anonymous. So what I did was I looked at the decision and, um, sure enough, there was something in there regarding the containers. Uh, as I put in your shared drive, um, the decision is in there, and one of the conditions of the permit was that those, um, containers had to be screened. So I wanted to bring that before the board just because it was brought up, um, and if, uh, the board wanted to send a notification or find out the timetable on the screening of those, it's just not being done yet. And there is a sign on them, which I guess technically might, it's up to the board, might violate the decision.
So in terms of getting back to this individual who's the, the complainant, do you have a contact information?
Uh, he wished to remain anonymous. I shouldn't even be using a pronoun, but it's really hard to not.
Okay, okay.
But the individual is aware that it was going to be brought before a planning board meeting.
Okay, so he may be listening. Well, I don't know, I mean, my, my sense of it is, um, you know, John's not here tonight. It's, he's a member of the planning board and connected with this property. But I would think that we could tell him, um, they received a complaint. Um, or maybe he's aware of it. Is he aware of it?
Madam Chair, because there was a complaint against a resident, I did make the resident aware. Um, I also let him know that if he wished to, uh, he could submit a, uh, letter or come to this meeting tonight. However, he was otherwise engaged. It's his birthday.
Yeah, I know, it's his birthday. Well, um, I don't know what, I mean, I, I think that they've been, I do, I do know the. the sign they're talking about and I do think also, in fairness to them, they have been working very diligently at trying to comply with all the terms of the special permit. So anybody have a suggestion of how you want to handle this? Seems to me we could just send Tiny Toes a, a letter asking if they could, because we have had inquiries. Give us some more detail when they, and when and how they expect to screen it.
I, I think at this point in time, that makes sense, Madam Chair. That is, since we did have a complaint raised to, I mean, I personally have not passed by there in a long time. And so I have not seen this here. And I think it makes sense for us that there has been a complaint raised and for him to, for Tiny Toes to please respond to it. Given, given the facts of what the special permit was, how it was put together and how it was presented to them.
Respond through us.
Yes, through us. I think we can, we can do this here. And so I have to ask, and I do apologize, I did not have a chance to look at the, the final decision. And Christine, help me out here. The specific, the specific area that we need to look at in the decision itself, do you have that?
Yes.
Can you refer?
I'm sorry. I'm just pulling it up right now. Here it is.
I didn't mean to.
It is, that's all right. It is page four of six.
Thank you.
Um, and it is motions and conditions of approval.
Yes.
And it is number one. Four and five. Four states that the applicants provide screening for or remove the large containers located on their property. And five is that the applicants remove the large containers when and if they are no longer in use.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. So the issue here being, well, the, the way this is being addressed is, is from the way I'm looking at this here is, is that there is a screening required regarding the container, which I'm understanding that the screening is obviously not there because somebody can't see from a public space the and second is, is that the removal of the large container has to take place when it is no longer in use. I don't know whether or not number five, Roman numeron number five applies as to whether or not they've completed the work or not.
I don't know. I, I brought it up because the containers were in question.
No, no, I, I understand. And that's, that's a good point. And the second thing is, however, is the screening. And the screening, if that has not taken place, or clearly it has not been done in a manner that is appropriate, because it is definitely visible from a public place, that that be followed up by the, by the owner of the property or the owner of the business. That's my, that's my suggestion.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I'm sorry. I keep cutting in and out. I just tried shutting my video off to see if it, it is, I'm hearing you better now. I, I agree. I think a letter is appropriate to see the timeline. I know they've been through a lot on cost and a lot, a lot of different additions to what they were doing up there. But maybe they can give us an idea of what they're thinking of and how soon they might be able to do it.
Yep. But I think more importantly, it's that there is the fact that the applicant was to provide screening for or remove the large containers located at the property. And that was supposed to take place at the moment when they started work here, which was basically in the December timeframe. That has not taken place as of yet, then I think there is a, there's a logical way to proceed with this here. And that is, is the screening is not there. And so as a result of that, whatever they, whatever they have there as a sign is also visible. So by having the appropriate screening, we are really addressing two items. One is the sign, which is really more as a result of the lack of screening and the fact that one can see these, these containers.
We'll work on a letter. You have enough to go on, do you think, Christine?
Oh, yes, totally.
All right.
Just updating on their screening plan and a timetable for its completion to cover the current containers which are visible from the road.
Right, right, right. And I think they, there's, they're, they really haven't started the landscaping per se. They've done grading and other things and, but maybe it will speed that, speed it along. Okay, so I don't think we really need a vote to send that letter. It's just answering a complaint, but does other people feel differently? Maybe a vote would be helpful.
I feel a vote would be necessary just so that the board is comfortable with me sending that letter before, without bringing it back to the board for review.
Okay, someone make, want to make a motion that we send a letter as outlined?
I'll make a motion that the, that our, Christine, please, with the assistance of obviously any member of the board to put together a letter to the Tiny Toes and that, that, and hopefully as soon as possible, indicating the, the items that are in question regarding the motions for conditions of approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, lived all, aye?
Professor Steiger, aye.
Bill Holman's aye.
Great. Okay, two more things. Well, let's see. I don't have any matters not anticipated by the chair. I really don't have anything except the question that I already asked Bill, which actually ties in with solar right below it. There's no updates on the solar, except that we did.
Yes, the Kevin McCarthy.
Yeah.
Email.
Kevin McCarthy, that's gravel? Is he here?
Is not. I got an email from him. I'm sorry, but to give background, we received an email in the planning board that someone was interested in the Marinelli pits for possible resumption of earth removal. The chair got in touch with Ms. Prue and it turns out he has not been as in touch with the Marinellas as he, he may have otherwise stated. However, he did get back to me just today when I asked him about it and a place on the agenda and said that he is going to touch base with Ms. Prue again, and he's hoping to be available for our August agenda to discuss then what his plans are going forward with a possible resumption of earth removal at the Marinelli pits.
Did you, I know that you wear a lot of hats, but in speaking with him, did you make him avail, aware of our earth removal bylaw and regulations?
I had not. He was looking to speak to the planning board. And so I simply offered him a place on the agenda. But now that he's gotten back to me today with regards to wanting to be on the agenda, I will be pointing to, pointing him to our zoning bylaws and the earth removal regulations. I'll send him links to both documents.
Yes. I think that's important because I don't think he really understands that integral to reopening a gravel permit, you would have to have a reclamation plan with it. So you could make that point, that point in the letter as well. But what Mrs., so I reached out to Louise Prue. She's one of the two sisters that own the Marinelli pit. Actually, I called her to let her know that the walk did not take place with Ryan and the engineers from the state for the second round of the grant, which she had granted us permission to go on the property. And so I was getting hold of her for that. And then this letter came in. So I also said, well, what do you know about this gentleman, Kevin McCarthy? And she said, yes, he's talked to me a couple of times, but apparently it's not unusual for the two of them to get calls from people that want to take out gravel. So she, she didn't know much about him. And I said, well, he's already sent a letter to my, to our board, you know? So I think it's the right step. He's got to go talk to her first. Anyway, by way of background, that's it. Anything else on that? I don't think we have to take any action. Affordable housing, I just wanted to let people know that Habitat for Humanity did build, did bid. And the bids, they got their bid in and they should be open within the next week or so. And I think they were the only bidder. She didn't know that, but Christina told me that. So I look forward to, to that happening. Tax title, do we have anything new on the tax title? There was somebody that wanted to reclaim, that said they'd pay the taxes.
We have no new updates. That's the last time we spoke about this.
All right. I'll try to round up those details for our next meeting. Senior housing, the only thing is that Ryan said if we do look at the town pit a study along with the Marinelli pit and they resubmit the grant application, he told Christina, so I'm relaying this, that he would specifically speak to them about using a portion of that property for a senior housing, suitability for senior housing development. Such a great need, identified in the the new study, but no, pretty much an open secret. The waiting list is forever and we really need that kind of housing. So no, John Hume and Jonathan Boss are coming the next meeting?
Yes, I spoke with them actually just today. There was some confusion about where they were going to get their data to finish out the services agreement. And I had a thought today and I emailed Mr. Hume and Mr. Voss that they could use our annual report that we put together every year. Every board is required to submit descriptions of what they've done that year. And it is updated every single year by every single board. And so I mentioned it to them and with Ryan's help, I found a digital copy and got it to them. So they have something that is up to date within the last six months as opposed to wherever they got their last information with board descriptions.
Excellent. That's great. Maybe a couple of cycles of annual reports would be helpful because not everybody gets everything they do in a single year.
Right. Well, they were given access to the website where those are stored.
Okay. All right. So I think we're down to administrative matters, which is our shared calendar.
Yes.
So everybody want to take a look at that? It was a it's basically proposes a meeting on the first Thursday and of every month that's scheduled. And then a second meeting that could be scheduled on the third Thursday of every month. But I had her put this in a calendar so he could actually see how those dates came out. So we wouldn't be, you know, on Christmas.
It's like, so I can share it here so everyone can see it if, if they don't have it in front of them.
Yeah, I can't pull anything up.
Okay, give me one second. There you go.
Oh, thank you.
No problem.
So our, our next meeting is August 6th, if we stick with this. Second meeting could be in August, would be August 20th. Third, then in September, the third, that's the one that Bill's going to have to chair, or we're going to have to reschedule depending on whether we have a new member by then. Otherwise, we don't have a quorum. You see, did you see any other problems with Christina with the dates?
Not as I was going through. Also, Madam Chair, when I was going through this, I decided to start putting in events and requirements because the compilation of the yearly report is due in December and the review of the budget is due in January. I also wanted to make sure that we had the posting of the associate member for June of next year so that we didn't have to run into the problem of not having an associate member going into the new election.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that.
I also put in a deadline for public hearings for any proposed bylaw revisions, because typically the warrant closes in early April. So if we ever want to do that, when there's just a typical town meeting, I know this year they're going to be doing a second one. But in a, in a typical year, we'll need to get those public hearings for any proposed bylaws changes done by March.
Do we know at this point in time, Christina, when the next public meeting, when the next town meeting is taking place?
I don't believe it's been scheduled yet, Francois. I think that the town is, is trying to be careful because there's been a lot of discussion about what, where COVID is going.
Absolutely.
With, especially with the fall, you know, with going back indoors and flu season starting. So I don't think we have a definitive date yet.
Then, so the only other concern and question I wanted to bring up is, is as you have noted here, there is a deadline here for the proposed bylaw revision. And it is my understanding, based on the discussion we had had with Brian, as Ryan, I should say, and as well as with the, with the select board, that if there were to, if we were to have a fall town meeting, that the bylaw proposals that were that we did not, that did not reach in the June town meeting, that they would be considered for the fall one. So I think it is maybe an opportune time for us to understand maybe from Ryan, what this protections might be and from our perspective to start lining those up. Especially in light of the conversation we just had this evening.
Yeah, the only thing I would note there is that there was a discussion by this board three months ago with regards to whether they would want to try and do a public hearing on Zoom. Because some people don't have access to it. And if, if we're still in the, the, the area, forgive me, we're not looking at this at the moment. If we're still in the means that we're only doing Zoom meetings, will we want to do a Zoom public hearing? So it's.
I certainly understand that. I certainly understand it. But I think if, whatever, whatever Ryan has available, if that can be shared with us, that would be great.
I'll get that information.
And then again, from our perspective, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we start thinking about aligning ourselves with whatever modifications or changes we may propose for the, for the zoning bylaws for our next meeting.
Yeah, we ought to take into consideration the thoughts of the select board on those.
That is correct.
How we address their concerns.
That is one. And then the other, the other one is the one that you brought up today, which I think we, we wanted to understand about the battery.
Yeah, the citing, and the citing of that too is really important. There's two changes.
Exactly. I just want to make that we are, we're doing this here properly and correctly and we do not have problems in the future.
There is, I, I don't want to go far down a rabbit hole, but our, our solar bylaw was built, was based on a model from 2010. You know, they do these, the Commonwealth comes out with model bylaws, right? So the model solar bylaw 2010, there has since been a model solar bylaw of 2014. So actually, I was thinking, you know, these things are tedious to do, but I could go through them line by line and see you know, where the update should be in addition. Interestingly, in the 2014, I didn't see anything about storage either.
No, and at that point in time, the, the issue was not a, was not quite relevant because the production was still in minuscule stages. It is, however, at this point in time, much, much more significant to the point where we have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, that, that would not be, because this is, this is commercial, yeah, I mean, this is a solar bylaw. So this would have to be another chapter, energy storage or another use.
Potentially, yes.
And I have not been able to find a model bylaw on it, but I can keep looking. And maybe Bill can give me a lead. I'm sure it's zoned somehow. I mean, they're allowing it, you're right, they're allowing it as an independent use.
Correct.
But I think it's often done as an independent use as part of a, a substation for a power plant. And of course, there are exemptions zoning. And then some of them are done as a municipal use and municipalities got a lot of, a lot of exemptions bylaws too. So that may be why I haven't been able to find it, but.
The commercial. Yeah, the commercial sector at this point in time, and specifically the investment sectors are actually looking into this here because not unlike what happened with the solar, there is, there are incentives, they're actually being built. And one thing to take into consideration is, is that we think of batteries in a very traditional sense, like the lead acid batteries or the lithium batteries. But there's actually quite a lot of interesting technologies that are actually at the forefront at this point in time, which are not necessarily only the traditional batteries as we know them, like batteries again that we have in cars, rather, other types of technologies that are actually being implemented here in the United States. Vermont is a very good example that are in the forefront of this here. I'm happy to address this future as some.
You're frozen up.
Nope. My stuff.
You know what? What I could do is, I did see those articles. I actually spent maybe an hour looking, looking through what's going on in this area. And maybe I could call some of the municipalities in the Commonwealth that have had these installations in and ask them. You know, I can try. I'll see, I'll try to come back with a report.
Just so that you're aware, in the meantime, we do have something in our bylaw that says that any public utility facilities must be covered by special permit. If they try to come in with a utility, even battery storage, they would have to still apply for a special permit under uses 4.2.
Even a public. Wow. Okay. All right. Okay. On my list of follow-ups, I don't think there's anything else. Is there? Is there anything? And nobody else is out there in the atmosphere, are there? Is there?
No, nobody's waiting to speak.
Alice, I wanted to update the board. I, I go by the Williams Road Solar Projects and 147 where they've been rebuilding the berm. Can you hear me?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, I'm sorry. It looks very good. The only thing that really isn't any better is the fencing over the gate. They haven't raised that up yet. The berm is where it's supposed to be. They planted the trees on top and it looks really nice.
They did say they were going to get around to the gate as well. And we asked them, and Bill is keeping an eye, Bill, Murray is keeping an eye. They did say they were going to get around to the gate as well. And we asked them and Bill is keeping an eye, Bill Murray is keeping an eye on it. So I'm glad it looks good. I haven't driven up there, so I'm glad you told us that.
Yeah, I just wanted to pass them on. It looks very good. I hope you can hear me because I'm not hearing a lot of the meeting.
Oh, so frustrating.
We're hearing you.
Can't hear you, yeah. All right. Well, our, our next meeting, unless any, oh, do you want to have a vote to accept this tentative agenda? Meeting count schedule? So we're making, making, yeah.
Object to change, obviously, depending on what happens. But I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good stab into what we need to do. Yes, absolutely.
Sounds good. I'll make that motion.
Okay, one second, Francois.
I am seconding the motion.
Okay. No further discussion. Let's move on to accepting this tentative planning board calendar. Because it's very important to have a calendar, I think. So lived all eye.
Steiger eye.
Bill Holman's eye.
Okay, we have it. So we want to, a motion to adjourn?
This is Professor Steiger. I'm making a motion to adjourn this meeting of the planning board today's, the seventh of, I'm sorry, the the ninth of July of 2020.
At eight twenty-five PM.
At eight twenty-five PM. Thank you.
Bill, you want to second it?
Nice to see you all.
Okay, wait.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of adjourning? Lived all eye.
Eye.
Holman's eye.
All right, we'll see you all.